Good afternoon, everybody. I want to call this July twenty eighth, special meeting of another Pender County Commission to Order. If you would, please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
If you bow your heads, please. Dear Lord, I come to you today thanking you for the many blessings that you give us each and every day. We ask for your guidance as we make decisions that affect the citizens of Pender County, as well as the state of North Carolina, United States. Guidance and direct us in your direction. In your name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And those of you that are first responders or veterans, please remain standing so we can recognize you for your service. All right, thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion for the adoption. Oh, before we do that, Commissioner Tate is running a few minutes late and he should join us shortly. With that, on section four, I'll entertain an adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda.
Motion on the floor to adopt the agenda is your second.
Our second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify and say an aye, raise your hand. All right, public hearing. Anything for the public here? Nothing there. Public information. And Trey, how many sounds for the public comment?
Thirteen, Mr. Chairman.
So we got thirteen. Normally, normally there's thirty minutes, but three more, I don't think it's going to hurt anything. So I will exercise that discretion from the chair to allow the thirteen to have three minutes. Before you call your first speaker, let me read the comment section here. So speakers will be acknowledged by the board chairperson in order which their names appear on the sheet. Speakers shall address the board from the podium and begin their comments by stating their name and address. Speakers shall be courteous and respectful in their remarks and shall refrain from personal attacks and the use of profanity and the discussion of personnel matters or other matters deemed confidential by law. Speakers are limited to two to three minutes, depending on the number signed up. There's thirteen tonight, and I will allow three minutes. So who's your first speaker, sir?
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman. Frankie Saunders.
Ms. Saunders, welcome.
Next speaker will be Bill McAbey.
All right, Mr. McAbey, your own deck.
Y'all have to forgive me, I ain't as fast as I used to be. I'm going to beat the horse to death again. I'm still on the kick with the Pender EMS in fire. I want y'all to please reconsider merging them. We can't, Pender County people cannot afford their taxes to go up, y'all. And I know I'm beating it to death, and I know y'all probably tired of hearing it, but I feel like you ain't hearing it. Even though I'm saying it, I don't think it's going in their brain at all. But I also want to talk about the paper. I'm going to beat that horse to death, too. People want to hear what's going on, even with what you guys post in the local paper, people. They cannot afford to be buying no New Hanover County paper. There's a big difference in price there. You're looking at, give or take, forty dollars a year for the local paper versus about four hundred a year for the New Hanover paper. Pender County people can't afford that. They just can't. And y'all know this. It's like you're not listening. We don't care about no cartoons. We could care less, y'all. We just, actually, they're just funny. And that we just pass over and just let it go. We just want what we got, stay like we got it, like we had it. So I guess y'all will hear me till the day you bury me. I'll be still on this.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And can we...
Bill McAbey?
Mr. McAbey, welcome.
Next up will be Julie Walker.
Ms. Walker, your own deck.
Yeah, hi. Thank you for what you guys do for the county. I'm here today to just throw it out there, as I have been for over the last couple of years, in reference to the noise ordinance. I live out five zero five three Shaw Highway in Rocky Point. I'm about two thousand feet away from a dirt bike track out there that was built. It's an Airbnb, but sometimes you might have five dirt bikes. Sometimes you might have twelve, fifteen, however many, I don't go count them, but there's a lot. None of them have mufflers on, I don't think. It's just loud. I am directly two thousand feet away from the property line where the dirt bike track is. I can sit in my house. Now, we've got a couple lakes in between us, and we know sound travels in an open area, but there's my house, and then I got a neighbor, Julie, which is supposed to speak next. Oh, she's here, okay, she's running a little bit late. But I can sit in my house, or lay in on the couch in my house, two thousand feet away from the edge of this property, with the TV on, and hear a dirt bike. Multiple dirt bikes, obviously. You know, I bought my property out there, retired from the military, to just live the rest of my life in peace and quiet. I can't do that anymore. I don't, personally, I love dirt bikes. I love ATVs, UTVs, et cetera, but I don't have them out of respect for my neighbor, Julie and Scott. They own the property around me, and they have horses, you know, and, you know, she'll speak to that, you know. But hopefully, we'll amend this noise ordinance and make our life a lot easier out there in that area. You know, like I said, I ain't got no problem with them. There's a place for them, which is away from a residential neighborhood. I don't think that the gentleman that lives right across the street, and I don't know that I can speak to him if it's allowed, but Roy, he's an old timer, but he lives right across the street on Carl Meeks Road from this dirt bike track. He can't even go out and sit on his porch. And it's, I mean, it's like, he could see them on the jumps and riding by. And then another neighbor behind him, he, you know, can't enjoy his property anymore out there. His horses have gotten out because of the noise, middle of the night, and things of that nature. So I appreciate it if we would do something about it. They pretty much have handled a trespass, and I used to have to deal with that, but now it's a noise. My time is up, but thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Julie Walker, next up, Jay Dixon.
Mr. Dixon, your own deck. Ms. Walker, welcome.
Good afternoon. I think regardless of it's a dirt bike, whatever the issue may be, there's many people in this county who have invested their entire life, their savings, you know, maybe they bought a house with some investment that they had made earlier in their life. You know, they're bringing so much into their lives, the hours that they work at their job.
Ms. Walker, I'm sorry. Will you state your address? I'm sorry.
I don't really feel comfortable stating my address in this situation.
You have to.
Okay, seven twenty one Sawgrass Road in Hampstead, Pender County.
Thank you.
Yes. Anyways, people invest a ton of their time, money, into where they live, and only to be subjected to who lives next door to you. And they can do, at this point, with the current noise ordinance, whatever they want until eleven PM at night. The county right now cannot come out and support the citizens of this county to be protected in their peace. There's people that have farms, there's people that have, you know, countryside homes, million dollar homes, and then next door to them is something that is detrimental and beneficial only to that person, financially, emotionally, whatever, and detrimental to whoever's living next to them, with no benefit to the county. The county should be able to come in and protect that person, to be able to enjoy what they've invested in their entire lives as Pender County residents. As of right now, people are not being able to be protected. We can call the sheriff, and they will say, "The noise ordinance does not support that issue." Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jay Dixon, next up, Chad Nichols.
All right, Mr. Nichols, your own deck.
Good afternoon. I'm Jay Dixon, live off of High Smith Road. Oh, I have property off of High Smith Road, soon to be moving there. Just wanted to thank you guys, and wanted you guys to be mindful that our county is very, have different sections of the county. You know, we have rural areas, and we have, you know, very areas that are populated, and I don't want y'all to make a blanket statement for the whole county for certain areas when it will affect other people in other places. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Chad Nichols. Next up, Kenny Fowler.
Mr. Nichols, welcome.
My name is Chad Nichols. I own the property at five three two Carl Meeks. Thank you, guys, for letting us come and speak today.
State your address, sir.
Five three two Carl Meeks Road.
You live there?
Yeah, my, our other address is...
Excuse me, ma'am.
Seven two zero one Adonis Court.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I am here speaking about the noise ordinance. So we have a, obviously, we came here, a little backstory. We've, my wife and I moved here from Denver, Colorado, a few years ago, and we looked at a property out here in Pender County. And when we were doing our due diligence, we actually had gone through county paperwork to look at, kind of see what was happening on the property prior, wanted to make sure that it was legal and part of the land use rights. And we had a letter produced from the county that said they were aware of everything that was happening out there, as far as the Airbnb and the amenities, and they were okay with it, had no issues with it. So that was part of our due diligence in purchasing it. So when we got that... and we looked at a property out here in, in Pender County. And when we were doing our due diligence, we actually had gone through, um, county paperwork to look at, kinda see what was happening on the property prior, wanted to make sure that it was legal and part of the land use rights. Um, and we had a letter produced from the county that said they were aware of everything that was happening out there as far as the Airbnb, uh, and the amenities and they were okay with it, had no issues with it. So that was part of our due diligence in purchasing it. So when we got that letter and all, you know, everything was kinda stamped from the county, we sold our Airbnb in Denver to reinvest all of that capital here in Pender County. And we felt like that was, uh, a great move to pull out from the west and bring it over here to the east coast. In doing that, that's, we've put our heart and soul in that and, um, that we feel like this noise ordinance would be a complete, uh, stop, would totally violate our rights as far as property owners to not allow us to do what we're doing out there anymore, stop our small business, uh, which would completely shut off our livelihood. So my, my wife and two kids, um, we've got, on the books for just the rest of this year is over a hundred thousand dollars that if this is passed today would completely shut that off for us. So I would urge you guys to reconsider. The verbiage on this is a little confusing and so, uh, we're trying our best to figure out what it means and I've posted what I, it seems like I, um, understand it to mean. Um, so I would just, I would urge you guys to reconsider passing that noise ordinance.
Thank you, sir.
Kenny Fowler. Next up, Tim Williams.
Mr. Williams, your own deck. Fowler, welcome.
Uh, good afternoon. I don't know this gentleman or any of these gentlemen or pretty much anybody in this audience. Uh, I'm here as a Pender County taxpayer. Uh, I live on High Smith Road as well. Uh, I own several businesses and several properties in, in multiple counties. And I think there's a lot of confusion right now just by reading through social media, the county ordinances. And I don't think, A, we have an Airbnb issue. I'm also an Airbnb owner. So I think we need to delineate between, do we have an Airbnb issue? Do we have a motorcycle issue? Do we have a nor, a noise ordinance issue? There's too much on the, on the table right now and we need to start ruling some things out so that we can get to the root of the problem. I too have neighbors that have all kinds of noise makers, whether it be dogs yelling at one another, motorcycles, fast cars, jet engines, what have you. But I took a risk when I moved out into the county, into a rural area with undeveloped land around me, knowing that one day, the property around me was probably gonna grow. And it has done so. Fortunately, it's not gotten to the point to where I've lost my mind and I've had to come to where we are today. I feel for both parties. Uh, I understand, my daughter competed motocross at a national level. Uh, she's a, a, a South Carolina state champion. And I have never been to a track where we rode until eleven o'clock at night. Um, the track owners, the closest one is in Maysville, uh, Jimmy Weinart's Training Facility. I think they shut down at around five o'clock in the afternoon and on Sundays they don't start up until after church services are over at like twelve o'clock. Um, that's my firsthand experience. Um, I'm sure it varies. And I don't know, again, if we have a nor, a noise ordinance issue amongst all the taxpayers in Pender County or if we have an issue, an isolated issue that needs to be resolved, whether it be agreed quiet times. Sometimes you just gotta meet in the middle and hash things out. We all can't have what we want, whether, regardless of what side it is.
Very true.
I don't get the, the assistance that I think that I should get over on my farm when things happen, but at the end of the day, I gotta pick it up and I gotta make it happen. And I'm gonna be willing to help my neighbors. My cows sometimes are, they're a handful, you know? Uh, they make a lot of noise. But the Pender.
Thanks, Miss Fowler. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Tim Williams, ne, and, and next up Trey Cook.
Cook, your own deck. Mr. Williams, welcome.
Good afternoon, my name is Tim Williams. I live at two fifteen Murray Town Road. Uh, lived in Pender County since, around since two thousand. Um, I'm also here about the, the noise ordinance. Uh, I ride dirt bikes. Uh, I have been out to Chad's place one time. Um, I think like Kenny said, that that's kind of an isolated problem. I think that you punishing everybody in the county, from what the rules say, is it would basically stop everybody riding dirt bikes. Uh, to the young lady, I've worked hard. My entire dream growing up in Wilmington was to buy property in Pender County and have a, a, a dirt bike place and a junkyard. Well, my wife put a stop to the junkyard, but I can ride dirt bikes at my house. I have a million dollar property that I spent in Pender County. So to ride my bike whenever I want, I race dirt bikes, I travel nationally all over the east coast. I don't have a problem with my neighbors. Like I said, I train at my house and this would stop me from riding and all the other people I know in the county that, that ride dirt bikes. I, I just think this is a, a, a neighbor problem over on Mink's Road and I don't think you should punish the whole county when we don't have a, it's not a problem. To me, it's a, it's a, it's a noise problem, not a dirt bike problem. And you tying it to all dirt bikes is just confusing. Also, you're tying it to ATVs and side-by-sides. Well, side-by-sides can be street legal. So does that mean that a street legal side-by-side would fall under that or would it not? Dirt bikes can be street legal. So does that mean if I'm riding out there with a plated dirt bike, it wouldn't abide me? Uh, it's just confusing. I, I just don't understand it and I hope you guys, I hope they can resolve it so it doesn't punish everybody in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Trey Cook, next up Harrison Faust.
Mr. Attorney, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Absolutely, sir.
Have, we have a, is, I understand getting several texts from folks who are asking in the public, is there a copy available online for their review of the ordinance tonight?
Yes.
I know we have our copies, but do they have a copy?
Yes.
Uh, is there any way it could be on screen or something so people can also access it or see it? Or how, or can you share with them how they can go online and access the policy or the ordinance?
If you go to pendercountync.gov and click on agendas and minutes and go to today's meeting and click on item...
Item number one.
Nine point one, it is attached to that item.
Ms. County Manager, have you got any idea as far as how many calls the Sheriff's Department responds to, um, as far as noise complaints?
I do not.
Okay. Is there any way?
Let's, yeah, let, I'm sure there'll be a lot of discussion.
Okay.
After we get the folks talked first. Yes, sir.
Are you ready?
Okay, good afternoon, thanks for affording me an opportunity to speak. My name is Trey Cook. I live at eight two four Haymarket Lane, that's in Wilmington, North Carolina. I'm a licensed attorney. I've been practicing law for seven years, but very, very importantly here, I'm strictly in my personal capacity as a motocross racer. I took off work early to be here today. I've ridden motocross at Chad's property, among other places. This year in particular, I qualified for regional championships. It makes me one of the fastest thirty-plus-year-old motocross racers in southeastern North Carolina. And I took off work to, to come here today to tell y'all that I have two very specific problems about what I understand to be happening in this room. First, I'm concerned about the degradation of property rights of those people who live in Pender County. Um, we've had a lot of attention brought to the fact that apparently, per this ordinance, it's gonna be illegal to ride a high boost up and down I forty, but you can't ride a dirt bike in the woods. And as Mr. Williams very specifically and clearly pointed out, I have a dirt bike with a license plate on the back of it. I can ride it up Castle Hain Road to Pender County from my house. I just can't ride it off the road per this statute. I think when we're talking about property rights, we're talking about objectively unreasonable behavior. And the only suggestion that's come in this room today, I find objectively unreasonable, is that I'm a criminal if I throw my dirt bike, my legs over my dirt bike off-road in Pender County, which is what I think this sets out to do. Um, and second, if we only pay attention to what's played out before us in the short time that we've been here so far today, I'm very specifically concerned about, and I believe legitimately concerned about, this public nuisance stat, ordinance being ripe for selective enforcement and targeted harassment. We've been given a very specific reason. The Pender County Commissioners are considering making it illegal to ride a dirt bike in Pender County and I think it's wrong, this is, as Mr. Williams stated before me, certainly not the way to go about this. Um, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Harrison Faust?
Yes, sir.
And then next up John Kane or Carney? I can't tell.
Hey, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate y'all allowing me to speak. My name is Harrison Faust. I live at five nine Mississippi Drive in Rocky Point. I'm a Marine Corps veteran and I currently work for D.R. Horton Home Builders. Uh, riding dirt bikes has always been very important to myself and my family. It is a very inspiring sport, uh, that builds excellent qualities such as confidence, commitment and discipline, et cetera. Uh, the years I've lived here, most riders have to travel long distances to ride. And I live in a neighborhood, um, where numerous kids, teens and adults all have dirt bikes. Um, they either travel to ride or they'll ride across the, the street to go to some woods or up the street looking for some woods. Uh, Salty Acres Airbnb allowing people to rent out. Uh, Airbnb allows people, you know, the opportunity to ride in a safe environment and they're not breaking laws by cruising the country roads, looking for places to ride or riding on property that has no trespassing signs. Um, and I one hundred percent agree with Tim Williams and everything he said. Um, that's all I have. I appreciate y'all letting me speak.
Thank you, sir.
John... And, and then, um, Ms. Richardson, you'll be up next.
Hi, my name is John Carn and, um, we're at twelve fifty-seven Purley Watkins Road. And I, again, I don't know any of these individuals either. Um, but we have, uh, farm equipment, we have UTVs and we have side-by-sides and we have four-wheelers. Uh, so this is a huge concern if this is gonna bleed out to the rest of the county. Um, obviously, it, somebody just mentioned there's, who calls for selective enforcement? So you, if you pass this, then if a certain neighbor calls, somebody's gonna have it done, someone else might not. So again, it's gotta be, uh, it's gotta be, so you guys have got, Kenny said it earlier. Uh, there's gotta be a way to compromise between these people where you've got certain rules and certain hours and certain times so that both sides can compromise to a place where the rest of the county can cohabitate. So, um, anyway, that's what I wanted to share. But again, for anybody that's got farm property or, or anybody that's got a hunting, uh, property out here, they're all on, four-wheelers are all on UTVs. You're talking, it's gonna, it'll be a big problem. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, Grady Richardson's up and then after that Jeff Janowski.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Grady Richardson. I live at eight twenty Shell Point Place in Wilmington, North Carolina. I'm a member of the New Hanover County Bar and have been for twenty-seven years. I practice primarily in civil litigation with an emphasis on land use and zoning. I also am the town attorney for Wrightsville Beach, Sunset Beach and St. James. If any of my boards had ever come to me, and I've been representing them for twenty years, the town of St. James, wanting to pass this ordinance for what I believe to be the targeted enforcement against a business, which is my client Chad and Destiny Nichols and Salty Adventures, uh, Salty Acres Adventures, I would immediately tell that board that it's unconstitutional. It's gonna constitute an inverse condemnation and they're gonna get hit with attorney fees and cost. I would be unequivocal in that. I am urging you on behalf of Chad and Destiny Nichols and their Airbnb business for you not to pass this noise ordinance tonight. On April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, the prior attorney representing Mr. and Mrs. Nichols was sent a letter by Daniel Adams confirming that the Airbnb and the motocross, uh, activities on the property were permitted by right under your zoning ordinance. And I'm gonna take some quotes here. Based on my interpretation of the county's UDO, operating a short-term rental at this property does not constitute a violation of the UDO. I understand there is a dirt bike slash motocross track on the property that is used, used by both the owner and some of the tenants who rent the property as a short-term rental. If this ordinance is passed, number one, on its face, it's unenforceable. You've heard already today blanket ordinance that's, uh, not gonna be enforceable and a lot of people are gonna be subject to it. If you're passing this ordinance, as I believe to be the case, targeting my client, you're breaching your zoning determination by Mr. Adams on its face. You're also violating the Nichols substantive due process rights under forty-two U.S. Code nineteen eighty-three because it deprives them or will deprive them, uh, of their, uh, it will unreasonably deprive them of their liberty and property interest. I've already covered that it's factually unconstitutional, but as applied, it will constitute an unauthorized and unconstitutional inverse condemnation and what that means for the county and everybody listening is that the county is gonna be liable for devaluation of the damages of my client's property not being able to run the business. And because it's an inverse condemnation by statute, you're gonna be taxed with my attorney fees and my cost to defend my client and their rights and interests. Now, the final point is it would violate Journal Statute six dash twenty-one point seven. Motocrossing and dirt biking on this property has been in place for over thirty-plus years. It does not operate past seven PM. I've heard nine PM and eleven PM tonight and that is factually incorrect. And if we have to litigate it, all of this will come out and the county will, and the county will suffer and its residents. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question too? I know you wanna move on, get to everybody. Can I ask this question? I'm gonna make sure that's clear.
Sure.
Did you say that you got a letter from the county staff authorizing? This is new information to me.
It's, I can pass the letter out. I had made ten copies, but of course, in my haste to get here, ran out of the office without the ten copies. Happy to approach.
Yes.
There was only one copy?
Mm-hmm.
I made ten copies, but I forgot the others.
Oh, I have one other copy.
Sir. Thank you, sir.
Is there anybody that's all copy? Is there anybody that's able to make copies for all members of the board to have this for consideration?
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Tate, I'm familiar with the letter, uh, that was sent under a prior operation and Mr. Adams is here, can address it. But I would advise the board, that's a zoning ordinance. What you're looking at here is a noise ordinance, which is a police power ordinance, which despite the representations of Mr. Richardson, has nothing to do with a zoning ordinance. Police power ordinance is often, for instance, target particular activities such as adult entertainment or other types of activity. Um, and so that, the, again, this, this is different there and there is a active zoning ordinance violation pending. It's been appealed, uh, by Mr. Richardson and his client, Mr. Nichols, and it is pending in front of the Board of Adjustment, uh, now. But this is separate, this is a, a, a police power ordinance, which is not the same as a zoning ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. So let's resume the, um, public comment and then we'll get to the discussion. I'm sure we'll have some lengthy discussion.
Yes, sir. Uh, Jeff Janowski?
Mr. Janowski, welcome, sir.
How's it going, guys? I appreciate it. I am here as a dirt bike rider. I've been riding and racing for twenty-three years now.
Your address.
Uh, one eight nine Amberly Drive, Wilmington. Um, Chad has given me... Um, Chad has given me a place to pursue my career, and this ordinance would prohibit that. Um, I've been riding at the property since before Chad even owned it, never had any issues. And, um, I think he's done nothing but make this property better, and if he, if I wanted to continue pursuing my career and doing what I need to do, I would have to drive over five hours to get to the closest place to, um, pursue my career in, in freestyle motocross, so. Yeah, that's really all I got. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Diane Gidians?
Welcome, Chief.
Thank you. Diane Gidians, thirty-nine forty-nine Willard Road. I wanna speak just briefly on the pending contract, private contract for Union Rescue Squad from Pender County, and give just a brief, uh, timeline, so I'll have to be kind of quick with that. Um, as we thought things were moving forward, and they are, I received a letter, or was copied under a letter from Chief Haraway of Pender EMS on July the ninth that was sent to Ms. Blue, and he forwarded it to my email, which suggested some of the training program and such like that would be done once the system plan is changed and the county moves forward with the contract. Some of that I needed to address with him. We said we would address it later when he was back in town. I did address it with the medical director, Dr. Wiles. Some of that is still pending. On July the twenty-first, I did receive a call from Chief Haraway, who stated that they were going to put forward a quick response vehicle at the Penderly Fire Department, and that we would respond, they would respond with Union Rescue's basic truck on every call until we were able to put the AEMT position in place. And, um, I also spoke with Ms. Pittman, the chairman of the board, who came to our station for other reasons, and she said, yes, this will work, and we will put that in place, which was a recommendation from me to Chief Basden when I had a meeting with Dr. Tate and Chief Basden, that I felt like this was a good working proposition. I received a call on the twenty-second saying we will not, from Pender EMS, go and remove our items on the twenty-second. We're moving that forward to the twenty-ninth, which would be tomorrow. We'll move everything out. And we will have a unit, a full crew unit at, uh, Penderly Fire Department. My comment was so. The unit is going to respond with a crew, and I said, my difficulty with that is I yet don't understand because we don't have a signed contract yet with Pender County. I was notified today that there was a letter to which it states, I was copied, but I never received that letter from Chief Basden stating that because of their difficulty in being able to work out anything, that Union Rescue holds no valid contract and, um, will no longer be a provider within Pender County, and that they had tried to suggest the QRV, and that Chief Gidians indicated she was not prepared for that, though there had been given, uh, prior notice. Um, also stating that this is, um, this deadline will happen tomorrow morning. They will come, they will remove their stuff from our station, and at eight o'clock in the morning, I'll shut the doors to Union Rescue Squad. Kinda like I did June the thirty, June, um, of two thousand and three. Uh, there's not a signed contract. They're eliminating us from their contract. We need to know when and how quickly you can move on with our contract.
Thank you, Chief.
Wait, wait, I, I've got a couple of questions. I'm just, Chairman.
I'll allow that.
Do you?
Sure.
You, you're saying you got a letter when? Cause this is news to me.
I got this today from another party, um, who happened to have it in their hands. And, um, it shows that I was carbon copied on it, but it's not in my email. I have had my family and my crew members check my personal email. It is nowhere there. I did not receive it.
So as the commissioner of the district, um, that's gonna answer the calls from the people who affected by this decision, whether they like it or not, I've answered the calls to the taxpayers. You got a letter, and you've been copying, covering, and I have respect for you, Ms. Chief Gidians, but you're saying that you've been copying, carbon copy on a letter that you didn't share with me?
I did not share it with you because I did not have it. I did understand that Pender EMS was planning to put first a QRV, which, as you know, was my suggestion. That's a good idea. We'll work it together.
We agreed on that about four or five weeks ago.
Absolutely, we did. And then it was told to me on July twenty-second from Chief Haraway, in a very cordial conversation of ours, that they would put a unit, a transport unit at Penderly Fire Department, and, um, that they would still respond to our calls. So between tomorrow morning at eight o'clock and until whatever time, um, the contract is signed, which I was being led to believe probably at the next commissioner meeting, August the fourth, we are in limbo. Either no contract, closed door, um, it's in your hands.
Well, apparently not mine, cause nobody's staff, and no one's notified me or anything to this matter. No wonder I'm getting a lot of calls from folks in Union asking what's going on this afternoon, and I don't know how to respond. I feel like I'm failing my folks if nobody's keeping me responsive with this.
I'm just trying to clarify myself that I did not receive this letter. I did know of the plan, but I did not know whether we could still respond with a basic truck because we don't have a contract. Pender EMS has eliminated our contract, and we don't have a contract with Pender County. Therefore, I can't move my ambulance tomorrow.
We've been going back and forth this issue with Union and Pender EMS since September, or whenever, even prior to that. Um, when I got on the board, I can't even remember when it was. It's been so many issues going on. But I do know when you and Chief Basen and I met last at my home, for hours, I thought a lot of those issues were resolved. So hearing this now is quite surprising to me. It's alarming. This is totally the opposite, even with the QRV, it's than what was discussed. I thought the QRV was going to Pender Lee and not a full truck to be stationed there, all of this. So where are these meetings happening at that I'm not made a part of, make these decisions?
I was told by Chief Haraway by phone that the QRV would be there. I was told by Ms. Pittman at a visit to our station that the QRV would be there. Since that time, I was told it would be a transport unit. Whether or why, we were prepared to work with responding, corresponding and responding together, but without a contract, we cannot.
And who made the decision not to authorize the contract?
I can't advise that. I have no idea.
It hasn't been approved by the board yet.
So, we couldn't have added that to the agenda today? If, so the people will, will, will be, have service tomorrow with Union?
It's on the agenda for August four.
But if, if these other items are emergency, why couldn't this item been, if someone had brought it to my attention, I could have, with a phone call, I would have requested it had been added to the agenda today. So what, Mr. Chairman, they didn't know till today? Who didn't know until today?
Chief Gidians.
Yeah, it sounds like she didn't know until, is that what I'm hearing?
And she can't.
I wanna know who the whole responsible, that's what I wanna know.
Do, so do we have?
Who kept me out of the information?
Do we have?
I don't feel too good about it.
Do we have?
I knew that they were going to put first a QRV changed to an ambulance. I knew that. I was well aware of that and had agreed that that was a good idea. We would respond together. But now we can't respond together because I don't have a contract, not with them and not with Pender County.
So, uh, Dr. Tate, uh, middle of last week, um, Infrarun manager Blue and Sarah sent out a summary of what was going on, so it was in, it's in our email.
Well, I didn't get the email. I ain't seen the email. I'm sorry. I've been having email problems for a while, but a phone call would have helped me. And I've told you that before. Anything pertinent to my district, I need to know with a phone call. I need to know.
The, um.
So thank you, Mr., all due respect, Mr. George. Uh, just to say that I didn't, I didn't see the email. So, uh, this matter should have been discussed before I emailed anyway, and we should have had a meeting on it to discuss if we're in agreement with it, not an email.
So this interim period until next Monday?
Yes.
Where was the, I hadn't seen the official termination date of the current extended contract as of today.
I don't think there was an extended contract.
So, so they're not?
Several months.
So how are they operating? Or they, are they?
I think it's part of our, our close session, um, discussion tonight.
And you all need to not discuss everything by email anyway. Because some of our districts don't have high-speed internet access. We don't have always capability of internet. These are matters that we need to discuss as a meeting.
Well, this is troubling, and we need to, we do need to discuss this and get, get a resolution.
I want it resolved tonight before we leave.
Well, Mr. Thurman, whatever, however you think we can move forward in trying to resolve this matter?
Um.
Rely on your expertise.
Yes, sir.
According to the summary we got, I think staff was waiting on their budget, which they didn't get till late last week, correct? Um, it's my understanding from the, the summary of the email that was sent out on Wednesday of last week.
And, Mr. Chairman, um, um, we want to be clear, we don't, we have a contract with Pender Fire and EMS. Um, they subcontract with Union Rescue. We don't control that. We don't have a contract as it stands now with Union. Um, uh, it's proposed that we will, but a- as it stands now, we do not, and we cannot, uh, uh, the board cannot, respectfully, um, tell Pender EMS to continue with a contract or not with Union, or for instance, with any individual.
Sure.
Employee, or vendor of other, you know, they have a lease with somebody for a station. We don't control that. We don't, we don't dictate to them what they do. So, um, uh, again, now, I, could we, i- if the board wished, could you look at adding a, um, uh, consideration of a contract with Union? You could, but that wouldn't change the, a- as it stands now, as I understand it, and, um, I don't know if Ms. Fulton is here, back there, she is, uh, but as I understand it, the, we have a system plan that currently provides that Pender EMS will be the EMS provider. So, before Union could operate under an amended system plan, that would have to be submitted and approved by the state. And I, again, I'll, is that, Ms. Fulton, is that correct?
Yes. I don't know if the state has to approve it before we can do it, but we would have to have a contract in place.
So, uh, again, and I, I'm, I'm just, you know, that, that's a, but we can't tell Pender EMS that they have to continue on in a contractual relationship with Union.
I wasn't saying that.
No, sir. I, I was just trying to address the, you know, sort of what, what our remedies.
During this, the, the most important piece to this few days, we're gonna be dealing with this, is the, the service level received through the folks in Willard and Penderly area is not going to be affected, right? You're still gonna have paramedic-level service.
Correct.
All right.
That, ye- yes, sir. That is my understanding of that they will continue that, and that, um, but again, we can't, as I say, we can't tell Pender EMS what to do.
No, we know we're gonna still have service. I mean, we're in Willard, we are informed people. You know the service is gonna still be provided by Pender EMS, or whoever's gonna be provided for. But Union deserved to know prior to today if that was gonna end.
Sure.
And I would have liked to have been involved in those discussions.
Well, it just goes to show you, that's one of those deals when you contract with a private company, they make their decisions, and you don't, you don't have any.
No.
Like the attorney said, you don't have any bearing on that.
Well, it shows me that I've been very supportive of Pender EMS and Union, and tried host numerous meetings in trying to get both of them to work together, and it shows me that the level of respect that it, whereas for me, to involve me with this matter. And I don't take it too kindly. I've been on, I've been an advocate for Pender EMS and Fire, and Union, working together. I see both as public servants who really have a passion for helping people. I don't get into this back and forwards, who like who and who don't. I don't, that's not my operation style. My, I look at the facts, but the facts of it is for a decision like that to be made, and to cut these people off that I, Diane, Chief Gidians, that's been operating there for what, forty, fifty years, and just to be told overnight, you're not gonna be able to operate in the morning, I've gotta filter these calls from the people, and I would have liked to have known that. That's just basic courtesy.
Agreed.
And if we have to take this to the Office of, Office of OEMS, how long is that gonna take to get an approval back for the state plan to be revised?
They said about thirty days.
So we talking about if August fourth, it goes on the agenda, yeah, you all have to have time to prepare those documents, and then send it over to OEMS, and we have to hopefully believe that they're gonna, everything's gonna be in a hundred percent of compliance. And then, so it's not, we talking about a matter of five or six days as we were saying earlier. You're talking about a month to two months, minimum?
Yeah, the contract allows for a ninety-day grace period where they can obtain their staffing and their qualifications and compliance with OEMS.
Ninety days, grace period?
Yes.
But she's being told that the grace period, that, that as of tomorrow, they're not gonna have any, they're not gonna be offered compliance or calls?
There's a ninety-day grace period from when the contract begins.
The, the contract with the county, not with Pender EMS. No, 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 to, to make that clear, that it's a.
Which is different.
Right, she.
Which could be a long, a lot longer time.
She was notified that the contract with Pender EMS and Fire is no longer. We have been in communication about the proposed new contract, which has a ninety-day grace period for compliance to allow them to hire the people, get them trained, get them okayed by the medical director and the Office of EMS.
So if Pender EMS decides that they do not, cause now, my trust, I, I'm, I'm just really, I'm trying to withhold comments at this point, but at, if Pender EMS decides that they do not want to contract with Union at all, what powers do we have as a governing board in order to do? Can we then override their decision and go on with the system plan, revising the system plan?
They won't be, they won't be contracting with Pender EMS, they'll be contracting with the county, which just started May second, when we made the, you know, commitment to allow Union to be, is when this ball should have started rolling.
But I haven't seen a whole lot happen since May second.
We've, we've gone through the contract to figure out what that process looks like, what the contract needs to say. And we were waiting on a budget to know how much that will cost.
Okay, so my question is, again, if, are we, are Pender EMS holding our hands with this decision? Or if they decide not to move forward with Union, can we then move, this governing board move on forward with our own contract, the subcontract with Union?
Yes, that's what we're proposing on August fourth.
And that could take up to, how, what is the shortest period of time that you estimate that taking?
Well, it depends on how quickly they can hire, um, as well as get, you know, training and getting signed off by the medical director. Um, as far as the State Office of EMS and the system plan, they've advised us that that's roughly a thirty-day approval process. Um, but that it wouldn't require them to recertify Pen, um, Union Rescue because they're already operating. It would just be they have to check the boxes of the EMS system plan revision, which has already, the ball is already rolling for that.
So you can think, you would say in thirty to forty-five days that, okay, it would be a.
Right, and the contract allows for ninety.
Because I, I don't really want Union back in this situation. They've been in it since two thousand and five. That they constantly playing the game of this, that predates all of this board members, is that we wanna be, have our own autonomy to be able to do this situation, and just do it right this time, so we don't have to revisit this again. I have no problem waiting, if I know that we're gonna wait during that time, that they're gonna come back and be able to be in full operation. Is that correct? Is that what I'm hearing with you, Chief Gidians, as well?
It was my understanding that we could operate with them with our basic truck when our contract is in place, that we could operate as basics as long as that QRV. As long as the QRV responded along with us. That's what I was told. As far as the wait period, um, that's up to whenever the contract is secured with the county, and then however much time it takes, which, which should not take long with the state, but it depends on Dr. Wiles and how much time he wants to take in boarding AEMTs. I won't have control over that. But in the interim, I thought that we could respond with two basics, with the QRV or the ambulances they've chosen to meet with us. That can't happen now since they've eliminated us from the contract, and we don't have one with you.
This is very, very, very concerning. And I don't like how it's been done.
You good, sir? So, no more speakers, correct?
Correct, Mister Chairman.
All right, closes the public comment. We'll move on to nine point one. And I'll open, I'll open it up for discussion for the, uh, noise ordinance.
So, this is a proposed amendment to the noise ordinance. Um, it was recently updated last in December of twenty twenty-four. Um, the, the main changes here are in three A, um, the word motorbikes was added. Um, HEVs, side-by-sides or similar off-road vehicles were already listed there. Um, and then plainly audible on the first page says any sound other than unamplified human conversation. It was added, that can be detected at seventy decibels or greater by a certified decibel reader. And if you put all of the definitions together with the, um, process, you get the effective property. So, it would be a noise plainly audible from the property line. So, it'd be plainly audible at seventy decibels from the property line. And before plainly audible was not clearly defined, which was why it was difficult to enforce. Um, but at this time, we have put the proposed language of seventy decibels or greater. Um, most of our surrounding ordinances are less than that. Um, the CDC recommendation, I believe, is eighty, um, that it could cause hearing damage, uh, for extended periods of time. Um, it, it doesn't necessarily indicate that you can't ride an ATV or a side-by-side or a motorbike. It just can't be plainly audible from the property line at seventy decibels or greater. And a- as far as the legalities of it.
Hmm.
That may be.
Where is, where is it added in the ordinance that it is illegal to ride dirt bikes?
Um, under three A, it already listed ATVs, side-by-sides and motorbikes, um, or similar off-road vehi- well, it already said ATVs, side-by-sides or similar off-road vehicles. We just added the word motorbike.
But it doesn't say it's illegal to ride them.
Correct.
Okay.
Is that seventy decibels, is that for a period of time or is that at any given time?
Um, it, it can be, but it does not propose a given time.
So, this won't affect the scare boat that runs up down the waterway at a hundred mile an hour?
There are also a number of exemptions, um, and to speak to the farming and agricultural equipment, um, that is an exemption. Industrial manufacturing or traffic related there too. So, it, it, it allows for you to ride them, it doesn't allow for it to be seventy decibels or greater from the property line.
Which New Hanover is at sixty-five, right?
Correct.
So, ours would actually be, okay, or.
Or it's fifty.
And at nighttime, I think it's like fifty-five.
Miss Blue, is this, uh, a continuous noise or repetitive noise?
Yeah.
I, I thought you were asking for the out, like, specific hours.
No, no, I was asking for.
For a duration, we had discussed that, um, it's difficult to enforce was the reason not, well, right, that's right. It's all difficult to enforce. Um, I do believe Trey spoke with the Sheriff's Office about enforcement and some of the challenges.
And there was one, uh, uh, additional request in speaking with the Sheriff's Office under four three A, um, which is, again, the ATVs, side-by-sides, motorbikes or similar off-road vehicles uh, shall apply twenty-four hours a day, just so there's no question that that's there, so it's not tied to the others, which are from eleven PM to seven AM.
Why is eleven to seven AM in, in, in the ordinance?
Um.
That's the way it was previously.
That was the way it's, it, it has been and.
If we're, I mean, if, if it's property rights, why can't they do it at three o'clock in the morning? If it's a property rights argument?
W- well, a- and, and again, we would, as with other police power ordinances, we'd say that simply isn't the issue. Now, there's any regulation by definition is a diminution of property rights. You know, if I say you can't o- o- operate a toxic waste dump on your property, that's a diminution of your property rights. Again, it's accepted. If I say you can't, you know, have, uh, again, m- loud amplified music all night, and, and, and that's kind of where some of this goes, is, you know, if somebody's having live music played, that, okay, they cut it off at eleven, a- a- and that's what some of the, some of the, the timing is there. And I will be a hundred percent honest, there's nothing magic about that. And that's to the sound discretion of the board. Uh, again, as, as this, as I say, this is a, a police power ordinance, it's not a land use ordinance. This is, okay, we wanna prevent certain things from happening. Um, and that, that's, that's what this would be, but.
One, one thing that is concerning to me, and I didn't know about this letter, I actually learned about this letter yesterday. Someone gave me a call yesterday and told me about this, and I'm glad that, that the attorney for the owner brought this forward. Um, and I'm thinking it's pre, I know it's predating my time on the board and most of us probably when this happened, but, um, when you are, you know, and I'm, I'm going back to the property owner now, when you're going through your due diligence to do what you wanna do, I'm sure he didn't probably try to hide the fact, he, he wasn't gonna plant roses, I mean, I'm sure he had a plan and he told the planning department or whatever wanted to do. And I imagine he fell under the amenities of an Airbnb, like if you have a swimming pool or a putt-putt golf course or something. So, I'm tr- I see both sides, I do, and I see the resident side that have to deal with, I've seen their videos and I've heard their videos. Um, and it's difficult, and I, for one, hate to add things to ordinances and, and stuff like that. Um, and I'm really, I kinda wish that, and the owner spoke tonight, I kinda wish, then this has been going on for a while, kinda wish he'd have come a lot before tonight, so we could have had these conversations and maybe sat down with a group of owners a- around him to, uh, to try to come to an amicable resolution. Um, I have nothing against riding dirt bikes, I got a four-wheeler, I, I do that, but only deer hunt on it. But, but anyway, um, and I do have a boat, but it's, uh, very quiet. Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, but, but, um, I'm just at the point where, I mean, and I think it is kind of isolated to this area of Rocky Point, that this is happening. Um, I'm trying to think in my mind, could, could you go to Castle Hain and do it? I mean, what would happen there?
Let's see, I don't know.
I can tell you how, I can tell you how.
Oh, yeah.
How the, the noise from the motorbike stopped right down the street from my neighborhood. And it was a similar situation, we, the neighbors complained, everybody complained about it, there was nothing we could do, it was private property. So, we just dealt with it for years and the, how they're finally fixing it is they're building a hundred and twenty houses on it. That's how you stop.
How to do it.
Well, well, I mean, we could, as a board, come together and see what the, uh, owner of this motorcycle park wants for that property and I, I reckon we can make them an offer and buy it, make a park. I mean, I've heard that mentioned too, but, um, I just, um, trying to wrap my head around this. So, uh, sorry, yeah, we're, we're doing board discussions and you can't. So, we're, we're having a discussion, yeah, so.
Mister Attorney, what, what is, so an average, an average song is between three and five minutes. Is that continuous or is that repetitive?
Um,
I only ask that because when I went out with, um, one of the deputies to respond to a call, the call came as a noise, a noise complaint, get there and it's a wedding. And, you know, a, a song, a song that's playing outside the church is three to five minutes. Well, by the time we got there, it was, the song was going off. And so, I'm, I'm asking because it's noise ordinance, um, I'm not so sure that it's, uh, pertains to just dirt bikes or.
No.
Or, or a complete ordinance.
No, it, it, it absolutely does not, and it does not, to be clear, this ordinance applies countywide.
Okay.
It is not a specific to any particular location, it is a countywide restriction. And, um, again, we tried to address what we understood the board wanted to see, but it's entirely up to the board as to, a- as to what you wanna do and, um, I mean, again, this applies if somebody's riding ATVs to get to a deer stand, just as much as it does to people, you know, making these jumps. Um, now, uh, part of the issue is, if you make that call, probably by the time a deputy shows up, the person's driven their, you know, their ATV to the deer stand and it's, and it's sitting there waiting for the deer. They're not con- continually riding, that's absolutely the case. But that is just the nature of any enforcement and has been the nature of the enforcement. And as you say, there's, uh, you know, if a song is playing and it's after eleven PM and it's deemed, you know, either it meets the seventy decibels that's listed here or, uh, uh, cause this, that's not the only measure, but it is one measure, but it is, then, uh, yes, absolutely. They can get, uh, you know, told they need to quiet down. And the reality is, in most cases, the deputy's gonna go and knock on the door and say, you need to quiet down. I mean, that's the way it m- most usually happens. And then that moves ahead, so, um, uh, uh, but there absolutely is, yes, we're trying to provide and also by the decibel level, then it's not a, we wanna make it more objective than subjective. That, you know, okay, you exceed seventy decibels, then that's a violation. Um, so, uh, but yes, if you're, it, if you're playing the song, if it's three to, or five minutes, whatever it is, they show up and it's, it meets that level, then it's a violation.
After eleven o'clock with the song though?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Um, and this changes it for the, uh, uh, again, the, and again, that's why I would say, if the board is inclined to adopt it, would say that, uh, because right now, there's already a provision that between eleven and seven, if you're driving a dirt bike or any other, you know, off-road vehicle that's creating noise, then it's a violation. This changes it so that, one, it sets the decibel level and, two, it would change it, uh, again, if the board accepts a propos- suggestion, uh, from the Sheriff's Department, that it applies twenty-four seven, that it is not a simply from eleven to seven as many of the other, uh, identified, uh, potential sources of noise are.
And I think that's where my problem with it is, I don't, I mean, if we're gonna do one noise, it may be offensive to me, it may not be offensive to someone else. Um, loud music may be offensive to me, but dirt bikes not, might not be, I don't like the singling out of one particular.
Right.
Thing, and I really don't like singling out loud noise when there is a, a law on the North Carolina books for mufflers.
Yes.
Um, and that we don't enforce now on cars. And they ride right by the highway patrol or whoever and, and just here they go, and that's not enforced. I have difficulty, I don't have a problem with a, a timeframe that, as before was eleven to seven for these things, or even a, a more restrictive one, maybe during, um, I get complaints all the time about a local establishment in Hampstead that has live music in their residential neighborhood. Um, and they stop the live music at seven o'clock most nights during the school week. There's people that don't like that because their kids are still, I guess their kids go to bed at four or five o'clock in the afternoon, because they complain about, you know, the loud music. I don't have a problem if, if the, if we had an ordinance that regulated those noises after seven o'clock on a school night. And then on a Friday, and I think a lot of counties and cities and municipalities have those different days of restrictive times. I'm not in favor of singling out one type of, of noise, um, when the rest of the book here is, is, has a, a timeline. Um, as I've mentioned before, one of the main complaints I get isn't, isn't, um, the, the noise from motorcycles or lawn mowers or chainsaws or weed eaters or boats, because there is loud boats and I live, live, live half a mile from the water and hear them all the time. The majority of my complaints are from people that, in residential neighborhoods that have continuously barking dogs. So, and we don't even regulate that at all. So, I have, if this is my, will be my vote, uh, my vote will be to not blanket, but yes, I would be in agreement to a time put back in that was before, that makes sense. I don't know that seven AM even makes sense if we're gonna regulate noise on ATVs, um, because I know several people that hunt and they're usually in the stand thirty minutes before daylight. So, that, the, the whole timeframe is my, my hiccup with it. And I understand, I, like I said, I listened to dirt bikes for, from the time windwater or tops of greens went out of business until they finally decided to develop the back nine, um, less than half a mile, not even a half a mile from my house. Um, the constant jumping up into the sand pits and they had their own motocross track there. The little boy that got injured with a brain injury, he just got to go to Hawaii last week to surf with, with Make-A-Wish thing. So, yeah, I, I mean, I know there's a chance for people getting hurt. I lived through it, I understand the noise is, it is annoying sometimes. And this was in a residential neighborhood, that it was allowed to happen for several years. But at a, at eleven o'clock back then, you could call the Sheriff's Department and they would go out there and run them off then. Because they did ride, there was no restrictions at all, um, cause the property was just left vacant. So, there's my hangup, uh, my vote, if the motion is made to, for would be against this a- as it currently reads.
Mister, Mister Attorney, what, whatever became of Daniels and Daniels with, um, the, the neighbor with the building of the jail and the noise? You know what I'm referring to?
Um.
Early morning construction.
Yep.
Yeah, um, it's, uh, the last communication I had, um, was with the, uh, interim attorney for the town of Berga, and he found that it was not a violation and therefore they just finished doing what they were doing, as far as I know.
Okay. So, there's, I was talking to another commissioner, uh, Ms. County Manager, and it does have exceptions to this, uh, within a construction thing or a construction site.
Yes.
Maybe permitted, or, or we issue, are we, is there a permit they have to be, uh, they have to buy to get outside this or to be within this exception?
Um, I'm not sure the answer to that question specifically.
So, if you have a concrete pour at three o'clock in the morning, which is what they did over here at DHHS, were they supposed to come in and buy a permit or be permitted by, in written, some kind of written form, uh, to advise you and the rest of the board and maybe some of the constituents around that area, um, for this concrete pour to occur?
Well, both of those that you've referenced would be in the town of Berga municipality, they would fall under their.
Right.
Their permitting noise ordinance and.
But we're gonna have, so with that.
I do know with, with like, um, when North Carolina Natural Gas was putting in the, in the gas lines right outside my bedroom window, they had a permit to do it at night from the DOT, um, that, that, cause they couldn't stop traffic. But they had, it had to be permitted through them, I'm not sure about residential construction, um.
What, with that, uh, you gonna have, uh, the public library going in soon and I'm sure there's probably gonna be some early morning pours, I would anticipate. What, with that, you're gonna have the public library going in soon and I'm sure there's probably gonna be some early morning pours, I would anticipate. But I'm not sure the closest residents to that facility or if anybody would even be disturbed. But I would just, I think some, some of this is a little too restrictive and I think some of it's not restrictive enough. So I'm, I would ask other board members to consider maybe meeting with the two parties before this is voted on. So that we could come to some type of compromise. I don't have anything else, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
My opinion is to bring this to a vote tonight and my vote would be to make a motion to pass this noise ordinance. Not the table it.
Alright, so you're calling the question and make a motion? Is your motion as it's currently written?
As it currently is written. We've been working on this for almost two years now.
Commissioner Grove, would that include the specification under three A? That that restriction applies twenty-four hours a day as requested by the Sheriff's Department? So the.
As it is written.
So the motion is on the table to, as, as the ordinance is written and is there a second?
Did you, you acknowledged that public comment was over, is that right, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yeah.
So, Mr. Springer asked if they could go back and, and both parties meet, which I can understand why he would say that. Because it seems like, you know, initially prior to tonight, I was certainly in favor of all of this. Because I didn't know it was as much opposition, hadn't heard from any of these people at all. Did not know at all, I mean, these last couple of weeks and so forth until very, very recently, very recently. And kind of surprised. But I know we did tell them at the prior meeting that we would support a noise ordinance or something to that, give consideration to. Let me clarify that, give consideration to looking at the noise ordinance, not necessarily.
I think Dr. Tate, if I can interject, this would also give our constituents a time to meet with the county commissioners or some of us. And be able to put their thought and be able, us be able to ask questions to them. And be able to have that collaborative conversation to, to have input from both sides.
And I don't disagree with, if I may.
Yeah, sure.
I don't disagree with that, but the reason we didn't have to have a public hearing tonight, because by ordinance change, you have to have, you're technically supposed to have a public hearing prior to it. Is we've been through this and never finished it, so this is just kind of hanging on from the last time.
Yes, sir, you're absolutely correct.
So we've been through the whole public comment, the, the chance for people to voice their opinions. And this is my opinion from being here since February of twenty twenty-three. Where it started shortly thereafter with the former judge that owned the piece of property and the residents there. We went through the whole, whole exercise, the whole noise ordinance exercise. I think this is the third time, am I right? Second or, at least the second, I think third.
Yes, and, and I would say, if I may, Mr. George. New Hanover County has revisited their noise ordinance twice within the past year.
Oh, I don't.
Trying to, it's just, it's a, it's a problem that, yes, there's not a magic bullet, there's not.
Mr. Chair, there's a motion on the table.
So Commissioner Grove's got a motion on the table as written in the language tonight, is there a second? And I've already asked that once, so. Alright, so for lack of a second. And if it lacks a second, we can get back to work on it.
I promised that I was gonna second that motion.
Alright.
And I, I hate to go back on my word after I promised, looking at this tonight and just spout and looking at the things that are in there this evening and so forth.
Can you speak up, sir?
I don't understand how, is it, is it dirt?
Bike still going to, is that, so that does apply to the dirt bike issue as well? And is the four wheel, is that, four wheelers are usually not that loud over north, not loud over north, decibels for four wheelers or what?
Dr. Tate, I'm not gonna.
I mean, I have four wheelers and so forth myself.
Yes.
Six or a hundred?
Let's get to it.
Yes, so you should learn that before you vote on this, I mean, come on.
So.
Well, all due respect.
This is not an interaction with the ordinance at this time, we're gonna have Robert's Rules of Order to the best of our ability to do, sir, thank you. So there's a motion and Commissioner Tate has a second and we'll go forth with the vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, raise your hand. Two.
Ah.
Three. Those against. I just could not support this the way it's written, I think it's too broad and I think we should have worked with the owners to, to deal with this. It's gonna be nothing but a headache and that's just my comment.
I think, Mr. Chair, this can be revised.
Absolutely.
And it should be revised.
Absolutely. Can you bring it back to the agenda for us to look at as, as we talk about this, please?
Sure, if you'd like to provide some feedback, we'll provide some more examples.
What I would like for us to do is to ask if we could put a subcommittee made together. Or maybe some of the people who spoke in opposition tonight and then some of the people who are for it. And then they come back to us with a record resolution.
Sure, will do.
Alright. So section nine point two, Ms. Brain, welcome. And you can, you can stand by for just a second till the crowd dims out a little bit.
Good afternoon, sorry, good afternoon Chairman Burton and Board of Commissioners. Respectfully, I would ask for direction from the Board of the County, from the Board on the County Manager Recruitment Process. It was tabled on June sixteenth, as we all know. And so we have two options for the Board to consider. We have currently in HR, we have a review of a hundred and fourteen applications received as of today. From the initial job posting in May and the Board could select from those applicants to interview. Or two, we could enter into a contract with Developmental Associates, Stephen Strauss, to recruit and screen County Manager applications. And that contract has been reviewed by the County Attorney. So we have two options on the table for you both, for you to consider.
Okay, discussion by the Board? I think this is much needed, we need to move forward in selecting a County Manager to help move our county's business along. And oversee our vision as a Board. And thank you for bringing that to us tonight so we can get some action done. So, any other discussion? I do like, personally, I do like a third party conducting the assessment center process. I've had a little bit of dealings with that type of process and things in the past. And I think it's just more effective and efficient. And it gives us a layer of, like a buffer layer. I think that, that group, I don't personally know any one of that group, but I think that they, they're professional. And they're, I think, from what I understand about them, they, they're up around Raleigh area. I think they're, they're well-known throughout the state in providing these type of services, so.
Development Associates have been around a long time, they're very academic-based, they were, their system searches all across the state. I think they work with the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
They do.
And is highly, highly respected as a leader in finding managers and I think all across this state and, and nation. And I think the Strauss have a very good, if you look online and talk to others, that they have a very good reputation there. And Steve Strauss and Heather Stra, I think her name is Heather, is a very, very credible firm. Going back to, I think, their days at East Carolina University and so forth, very credible.
I do think you've helped them out a little bit by at least starting them with a great pool to look at.
Absolutely.
So hopefully they'll reflect that, reflect that in the contract.
Yes, sir, he's, has said that he would reach out to all a hundred and fourteen to see if they would.
Oh, very good.
Enter, file applications with his company to be reviewed.
That is good that we had so many folks across the country already put in for that, that's good. Alright, any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion on either choice.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract, the first order for the proposal for Development Associates LLC for assistance in hiring the next County Manager.
Alright, second that motion. Motion and second it on the floor, so do all those in favor, signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Chairman, if I may, unanimous vote. When I spoke with Dr. Strauss, it had asked that if the Board could carve out an hour, hopefully less, put in an hour. To talk with him and he preferred to talk to the Board as a whole. To just get your sense of what you're looking for as a Board and talk about what they'll do. So I was gonna ask, would the Board be willing to, and I always hesitate to do this, but to dedicate the time after the August fourth. Since that, there won't be any public hearings at seven, we'll have the meeting, then go into closed session, we could do that as, as part of personnel. If the Board was so willing, would that be?
I think it's very fair.
Can, can everybody work that into the schedule and then we'll, we'll get up with him and hopefully make that work. Because obviously, until you voted to approve the contract and do the other, I didn't, didn't want to ask. But if that's okay, we'll try to set that up for the fourth, you know, hopefully, and we'll look at the agenda and get a sense of when we think it would be.
Very good, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Brain. Alright, nine point three and nine point four, back to back, to Ms. Blue.
Yes, these are typical end of year budget amendments, they happen every year. They would typically be on a consent agenda, but because of the timing and the special meeting, I just figured I would explain them. Basically, it's over collections and tax, it's budgeting to pay those to the towns EMS fire and the schools. And then the next one is the trust account, which is for DSS where we maintain rep payee accounts. They bring in money, that we pay out their money and it's just so that we can make those payments on their behalf. None of this is actually alternate, altering our budget, it's just allowing us to pay out what we collected.
Just the Board's formality of doing business, okay, and you're doing, that's nine point three and nine, does anybody got a problem with combining those two? If not, I'll entertain that motion.
I move to consolidate nine three and nine four for approval.
Alright, motion on the table, is there a second? Second, and all those in favor, signify by saying aye, raise your hand. Okay, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Miranda, just like you've got a couple of items here, nine five and nine six, sir.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Marcella Miranda, IT Director of Pender County. Here presenting to you two items that are also, just as Ms. Blue said, this, these were, these were intended to be on the consent agenda for the previous meeting. They did not make it. These are our annual renewals for both our Barracuda Total Email Protection as well as Backup Solution. This is our, this is our secondary immutable cloud backup that we utilize. As well as Total Email Protection includes our email encryption as well as security awareness training. And many other features that we use like incident response every single day to mitigate things like spamming all of your email boxes. The amount on this, we actually, we obtained three competitive quotes as well as CAD's quote also being on GSA. Which is a national contract. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Miranda, on items nine five or nine six?
They're inconsistent, Mr. Miranda, with other quotes that you, I'm sure you did your due diligence.
Absolutely, absolutely, this was by far the lowest.
Absolutely, I'd like to make that motion.
Alright, a motion, and you wanna combine nine five and nine six?
I bet, yes, sir.
Alright, motion's on the table, is there a second? And a second, so all those in favor, signify by saying aye, raise your hand, aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you Commissioners.
Alright, then, let's see, Mr. County Attorney.
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman. Would ask the Board to consider going into closed session for item three, Attorney Client, item six Personnel, is there anything else?
It's just Attorney Client.
Just, okay.
Okay. Madam Manager, anything?
And when we get there, I'll add some of the cases to be discussed, Ms. Chairman.
Madam Clerk. Commissioner Grove, I'll pass, alright. Commissioner George. Alright, Commissioner Springer, Vice Chair.
No, sir.
Commissioner Tate.
I'm highly disappointed and upset about the union situation and I, highly. And I'm getting so many calls and texts about it right now and I'm just, but I'll deal with that this evening, I'm very highly upset.
So, I don't have anything other than to reiterate Dr. Tate's. You know, this information is highly disturbing and just kind of, I don't know, it's very disturbing to hear tonight. That we can't just be professional and amicable in certain ways to, to move forward with the business of the citizens that we serve. But hopefully we'll get through that.
Ms. County Manager, when is the appointment gonna go through for the Board since my, since my resident, or my vote of being taken off the, during the mess of fire?
I believe it's on the August fourth agenda, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, when does that, when does the application period end?
I can check.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Alright, I'll, with that, I'll entertain.
And, and Ms. Chairman, this would include the Pender Post versus Pender County. And then the recently filed as of last Thursday, the Coastal Pines versus Pender County cases as well. Just want to discuss those with the Board briefly.
Alright, with that said, I'll entertain a motion, go into closed session.
Make a motion.
Motion closed session, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Alright, we're in closed session, thank you everyone.
Two hours and they stayed up very late to go over the policies with me and indulge all those comments. We had some very good, healthy feedback and dialogue and I really appreciate the two of you ladies for giving me that time to share my thoughts, thank you.
Very good, thank you ladies.